Let's get this show on the road, as they say. Mr. Collins, you're being summoned, the voice of God. Or not. Welcome, thank you for joining us this evening. We do not have Mr. Dauber with us this evening. He's recused himself from this topic, so you can see that we're a little bit switched up. Our student board members are not with us either, because this is a special board meeting. So, welcome to the special board meeting. We have one topic meeting, the Stanford General Use Permit. Colleagues, can you please take a look at the agenda, as complicated as it is? And can I get a motion to approve the agenda order?
I move we approve the agenda.
Moved by Ms. DeBranza and seconded by Ms. Bain Caswell. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say nay. Alrighty, let's go to this topic. We will have cards, I assume. Dr. Golden, why don't we let you present, and then we'll take cards? Does that seem right?
That would be great.
Okay.
We have an hour and a half. I think we want to kick off as these meetings, these Santa Clara County meetings always, or generally have, with a presentation from Kirk Gerard. After that, I think we want to have comments. I'll leave it to the board to decide. You know, we have those two documents that we have, the one authorized by, authored by Mr. Collins and the one authorized by Libby. And so, the, I'll leave it to the board if, how much time you want to devote to these, or alternatively, if you simply, we have hard copies and we can make them available on the Internet. And so, essentially, the big need here is for, to generate comments here that can, that the board will find acceptable to go into a comment letter to Stanford, to the county. That comment letter is due by, it's due by December the 4th, which is a Monday, and I've asked for an extension to December 6th, and it remains to be seen if we'll get that extension. I have this scheduled for next Tuesday. My plan, if all goes well tonight, is to mine the comments that are made at this meeting and the comments by the board into some kind of draft document that I can review with the board next Tuesday. So, it'll be in draft form, and then, we have this giant hiatus where the next meeting is on December 5th, and so, hopefully, we'll be able to get enough done next Tuesday so that the draft, I can get directions from the draft to do a final version. And that's it. That's, that's my plan. So, if that's acceptable, I'd suggest, at least the first thing is to hear from Kirk. And so, let me introduce him. Kirk, why don't you go to that podium there? And Kirk is the Director of Planning and Development for the County of Santa Clara. He was an interim director, and he has a staff of 85 and an annual department budget of $18 million, none of which is available to us. The, his area of expertise includes general plan policy, building codes, and civil engineering, Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, code enforcement, and so on. Incidentally, Kirk is here tonight. Yes, he is, at 7:00. This morning, at 9:00, he was doing a presentation in Santa Clara County. Tomorrow, or I should say San Mateo County, in tomorrow at 9:00, he's doing a presentation in San Mateo County again. At 6:30 tomorrow night, he is at Stanford University doing a presentation. And, I don't know, he's taking off Thursday, nothing, but he is, he is doing a presentation on Thursday night. And he's great, because he has, well, he loves this, he loves planning, and he's really good at presenting. I've seen him quite a few times. So, with that, Kurt, it's all yours.
Thank you very much.
That's a big introduction.
I know, I was just saying, thank you.
So, do you have like a t-shirt with your tour dates on the back?
No kidding. Well, actually, the one fact that I thought you would certainly uncover is that I'm married to a third grade teacher, who's been an elementary school teacher for 30 years, so.
And what district? What school district?
In Jacoby Creek School District, Humboldt County.
Because Kurt was the planning, before this, he was the planning director in Humboldt County.
Yes. So, I've been to a few school board meetings, at my wife's urgings typically, represent our family's interests, but I'm happy to be here. I represent the county. My role in the General Use Permit is to oversee the county's processing of that permit from staff to our decision makers. And I, key function is to make sure that everybody's interests are understood by our decision makers. So, the tour is really to work with the local jurisdictions and try to get as much local perspective and knowledge as we can into the permit process. So, here is a resource for you. I've got a PowerPoint that outlines the project, a little bit about the Environmental Impact Report. I have some key issues that I know you already expressed to us, I wanted to go over those, and then, a little bit more about the process for the, the general plan, or the General Use Permit from here on. I told Bob it'd be about, maybe 15, 20 minutes, and I'm happy to take questions during the end, whatever your pleasure. So, how do I index?
So, Kirk, you might want to get closer to the mic.
Okay, I'll be happy to.
So, we can make sure we pick you up on tape.
Okay.
And colleagues, shall we hold our questions to the end, and then go, sort of go around and do questions?
Oh, yeah.
Is that alright? Okay.
We're going to do public comment after.
Yes. We'll do your prezo, we'll do public comment, and then, we'll ask questions, if you don't mind.
No, that sounds fine.
And then, with respect to the documents we got, Bob, I would say, as we usually get comments via email, we can look at the Safe Rats to School one, and then, since Mr. Collins is with us, he can walk us through the data he had. So, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, absolutely.
Please get started, we're happy to have you here. Thank you for making time.
Yeah, thank you. And do I just give you the high sign for indexing, or?
Yeah, why don't you just do that? Just say, "Next slide."
Okay, next slide, please. So, this is the overview of the presentation, and the first topic is the General Use Permit application. Next slide, please. So, the green area is the unincorporated portion of the Stanford campus. All of the academic growth area is located in the unincorporated campus, and the application concerns development within these boundaries. Next slide, please. Yes. I, no, it's okay. We used to have mics like this in the boards' chambers, and I will, please remind me if I forget, but, but I will try to, try to speak right into the mic. So, these are the highlights of the application that Stanford has submitted to us. It's 2.275 million net new square feet of academic space, 3,150 net on-campus housing units, or beds, depending upon if you're talking about student beds or housing units for faculty-staff, some childcare requests, and some parking requests, a few minor modifications to boundaries within the campus, but these are, this is the headline of the, of the ask. It's projected that this build-out would occur over a 17-year period, and there is no build-out proposed in the Foothill area or the Faculty District and the San Juan Development District. If you look at the details of this map, the campus is broken down into districts, and this is particularly important, because this relates to where housing may occur and where the demand for schools may occur. But the bed symbol, of course, breaks down the total housing ask by district, and the building symbol breaks down the entire development ask for the buildings by district. Next slide, please. So, I think many of you are already familiar with the regulatory framework for Stanford land use in the county, but I'll say, in modern times, it really can be understood by the community plan, which is an element of our general plan. It's effectively a specific plan for you planners for the geography of the campus. The, when the community plan was adopted in 2000, they asked at the time for the first increment of development under the community plan, and that's referred to as the 2,000 General Use Permit. They have built out the bulk of the request and the development allocation that was provided in 2000, and they're coming back for the next increment, and that's the 2018 GUP application. The community plan and the 2,000 General Use Permit had an EIR prepared for it, and I mention this because we're doing another EIR in the next increment of development. So, comparing the two EIRs and how issues were treated is, is very educational exercise. Midway through the build-out of the 2,000 General Use Permit, Stanford prepared a Sustainable Development Study. The board wanted the Sustainable Development Study to look at long-term planning in the campus. They wanted to understand the build-out of the campus and whether or not the build-out could force an increase or a change in the academic growth boundary, which is effectively the urban limit line for the campus, and then, also, some issues about the sustainability principles that were in the community plan and how well Stanford had, had done in some of the sustainability principles. That's, that also, that report also informs this 2018 GUP application. Next slide. So, to put the request in perspective, there's two bars here. The top one shows the square footage of academic support facilities, academics and academic support facilities in the campus. The red is the amount of development at the campus that existed at the time the 2,000 Community Plan and GUP were adopted. The orange reflects that was granted in the 2,000 General Use Permit, and the yellow is what is requested as a part of the 2,018 General Use Permit. The top bar is academic space, the bottom bar is student beds, faculty and staff units. Next slide, please. So, I mentioned the community plan. There are policies in the community plan, and the General Use Permit has to be entirely consistent with the policies of the general plan. But in, these are four areas that they're proposing to continue with the policies that were established and the precedent that was set with the 2,000 General Use Permit. One is to retain the academic growth boundary. There's no request to expand the academic growth boundary. Another is to continue the no-new-net-trips goal. And I think you're all familiar with this, but effectively, it's to employ traffic demand management programs on the campus so that, in the morning and the evening, the traffic coming and going from the university doesn't increase over time, based on a 2001 baselines test. Every year, people are stationed at every exit and entrance to the academic growth boundary, and they count the cars. And this is going to be a topic of discussion, how this count occurs, but the intent is to look at the peak traffic in the commute direction in the morning and the evening, and then benchmark that against the levels that were measured in 2001. Stanford in 2000 said that we will deploy traffic demand management and not see any increase in that number, and they're saying the same thing in this 2,018 General Use Permit. They're also proposing to continue with the jobs and housing balance that was established in the 2,000 General Use Permit, and a condition of approval said, for every half a million square feet of academic space that you build, you must build 605 housing units. And they're proposing to maintain that linkage in the 2,018 General Use Permit. And they're also proposing to pay $20 per square foot into the low-income housing fund that can be used to invest in low-income housing projects. There's a distinct difference between the current condition and the 2,000 General Use Permit, and the current condition says that those funds can only be used within a six-mile radius of the campus. They're proposing to expand that range to include transit centers that might serve the campus, and that's their current proposal. Next slide. So, you all understand the basic framework of an environmental impact report. What is the effect of the project on the environment? How can those impacts be mitigated? And are there any alternatives that might reduce any of the significant effects? And that's the basic outline and basic purpose of the environmental impact reports, so decision makers can, can understand these parameters of a project. Next slide. So, this particular draft EIR is in two volumes with a very meaty appendix, and I say that because it is a lot of information. The heart of the document is in Chapter 5. It describes for a range of environmental parameters, what the current setting is, how this project would affect the current setting, what the possible mitigation measures are, recommends specific mitigation measures, and draws conclusions about the significance of those impacts after the mitigation measures are, are applied. And that chain of analysis is one area in particular that we're asking for as much feedback as we can, because of the local insight into what the baseline conditions are, what the impacts may be, and, and that's where we can make improvements to our analysis and the mitigations that we're proposing for the project. Next slide, please. So, these are some of the environmental topics. I've highlighted a couple that I know are near and dear to the district's heart. Next slide, please. So, we have heard from the community. Two headline issues are the housing supply and demand that this project represents. And some of the, the key issues are, how would this project affect the jobs-housing imbalance on the peninsula? And particularly, are there housing, is housing being provided to workers on the campus? And are, is the campus fully mitigating its effects on demand for housing? And with particular attention to the low-income population that might be working at the campus but may not be able to afford a median price home. In the area of transportation, the key issue really is come to, the mitigation is no-new-net-trips. Is that feasible? Can it be accomplished? And if it isn't accomplished, what might be the ramifications of the project? And I'm going to go a little bit more detail about the mitigation framework for no-new-net-trips, but, but those are the key issues. And of course, just the sensitivity of any increase in traffic on the roads, given the current state of the congestion. Next slide, please. This top bullet is intended to capture some of the concerns that you've expressed in the notice of preparation and some of the subsequent discussions that we've had. There are 550 housing units proposed for the Quarry Road area that's going to generate a demand for schools. How would that school demand be met under the proposal? There's an issue that Stanford's proposing, 900 additional housing units for graduate students, and if they move out of homes within Palo Alto, would the vacancies be filled by people that have more children and create what's been termed displacing impact, secondary impact on your enrollment? There's some discussion about what are the student generation rate assumptions for various housing types. There's various projections of the increased demand for elementary, middle, and high school students. We've drawn figures from some of your studies, but it's not clear that those are the most accurate figures that could be used. And then, we've gotten some very good detailed analysis on safe routes to schools, pedestrian and bicycle transportation to and from the campus, and from the housing projects that is related to the campus and the schools in the vicinity. So, those are some key areas of concern. We looked at the Notice of Preparation comments you provided. We've got a lot of good baseline information in the, in the report on population housing, where the, what type of workers would be created by the project, what type of housing demands were created, where would it occur in the community? The, we did student generation. So, so now, I think the next stage is, did we get all that analysis right? Do you agree with it? Where do you think it's at odds? And those are the kind of comments we're inviting at this stage of the comment period. And then, there's, I'll just skip to the future growth. What is happening in the long term in the campus? What effect does that have on public services? Would that potential growth require a change in the academic growth boundary? There's a lot of questions about, after this incremental development, then what? Next slide, please. So, I wanted to go briefly, but very briefly, I think, in the details of the transportation, that there are some very good aspects of the Stanford proposal, particularly in the way that traffic is now analyzed under CEQA, and that's vehicle miles traveled. Because of Stanford's traffic demand management programs, they have a very low rate of people in single occupancy cars, and they have analyzed the vehicle miles traveled with this increased proposal, and it's well below the standards that are, are recommended in our region and in the state for vehicle miles traveled. The other side of the equation is congestion management. And under congestion management, the analysis was done assuming that there would be no traffic demand management, so that all the traffic that would be generated by the project would be added to the surrounding streets, and not only the project contributions, but the project contributions plus the long-term growth projections for traffic increase in the vicinity, so the cumulative impacts. Now, this is a very conservative assumption. It effectively means that there's no effort to do the no-net-trips goal, but it does analyze a worst-case scenario, and in that scenario, just the project trip contribution to the local roadways would have significant effects on six intersections. And when you add the project contribution to the cumulative impacts, there'd be 21 intersections that would violate a significance criteria for effect on the environment. So, that's not a small matter. Also, the contribution of the project to freeway also would have a significant effect. So, if there's, if there's something that would drive a mitigation requirement for traffic demand management, it would be this, because if there were no efforts to reduce traffic, it would have very significant effects on congestion in the area as it's, as it's proposed. And next slide, please. So, the mitigation. The mitigation framework is, now we'll apply the no-new-net-trip standard, and we have to design that standard, so it isn't just a goal, but that it's something that would be feasible and enforceable on Stanford. It's a fundamental mitigation requirement. And the first tier of the no-new-net-trips are measures that Stanford takes within the campus to reduce traffic coming and going from the campus proper, within the project area. The next tier are projects that Stanford would propose and fund that aren't, don't have, wouldn't cross the cordon to and from the campus, but they would be reducing trips within the impact area. So, the impact area is very broad, 280, 101, north and south, and the rationale here is a trip that's reduced out of those intersections, no matter what its origin and destination, has the same effect of mitigating that impact. And, and I'll give you an example, because there are four projects that are being reviewed as a part of our EIR. There are bike improvement projects in Palo Alto, two in Palo Alto, one in Menlo Park, and, actually, I think there's two, the other in San Mateo County. And they, they're going to increase the bike pedestrian access to and from the campus. Because of that, they'll be reducing traffics potentially across the cordon, but also in the impact area. And, and if Stanford pays for those and they're implemented, they could get credit for those projects of reducing trips, taking trips, or I'm sorry, cars off the road, equivalent to reducing trips across the cordon. I didn't say that very succinctly. This, did I, as much as I spoke to it, did the meaning come across? Okay. The, and the third trip is, or the third tier is Stanford would pay into a fund to the county, and the county would work with local jurisdictions to fund pedestrian, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit projects in the project vicinity. If those three interventions don't work, then the monies could be used to improve intersections and road segments. So, really, as almost a fourth alternative, the mitigation would be the standard road improvement mitigation that you typically see with projects. And I think that's all I want to say about transportation. So, next slide, please. This is the summary. Of all of the environmental parameters that were evaluated, we have four in what's considered the significant and unavoidable category, and that's, their impacts will be significant, potentially even after application of mitigation. The first is noise and vibration from construction on the campus, and there's a chance that there are sensitive receptors next to a construction project, and even after you take your best efforts at reducing noise, the noise levels could be above thresholds. The second is transportation and traffic, and as I mentioned, as a conservative assumption, we're, we're assuming that the no-new-net-trips may not be successful. There may be spillover onto the roadways, and if there are, there'd be impacts to the intersections and, and road segments. And then, finally, historic. There's been an historic resource inventory at the campus. There are historic resources there. There's a potential that those historic resources could be modified or demolished. And if that potential exists, that's a significant and unavoidable effect under CEQA. I'll say that the framework is that it would be a measure of last resort, and there would be a separate environmental review burden before Stanford would be allowed to modify or demolish any historic resource, but nonetheless, because it is a potential, it is, remains in the EIR as a potentially significant and avoidable measure. Next slide, please. The last aspect of the environmental document is review of possible alternatives. The no-project alternative has two flavors. One, Stanford ceases to grow, and so, the development would, would halt after the completion of the 2,000 General Use Permit. The other scenario is that Stanford would be allowed to continue, but they would have to apply for permission to build on a project-by-project basis. Each building project would require a use permit application and an environmental review, so it's sort of an incremental development as opposed to a programmatic approach. Other alternative is less development over the same project period. And the final alternative is effectively a prohibition on modifying or demolishing any resources considered historic. The no-project alternative is the environmental superior alternative, followed by the reduced project alternative. So, those are described in the, in the draft EIR. The changes in environmental footprint are described, and, and we welcome comments about those conclusions and analyses. Next slide. Little bit about process. We are in the 60-day public review period. It closes on December 4. We're going to be evaluating the request for extensions in about two weeks, and at that time, we'll notice what the extension period is. And we want to accommodate, make sure that we're not closing the period, the comment period in a way that, that cuts off comment, but we'll make that announcement of what the extension is around the November 30th, public meeting that we're having with our planning commission in, in the vicinity, or in the area. Once we close the period, then we will be revaluing comments and then publishing a final EIR, which consists of the draft and the county's responses to all the comments we've received, written and verbal, and that will constitute the final EIR. The final EIR will be presented with staff's analysis of the project's consistency with the community plan or ordinances to the planning commission. They have an advisory capacity to our board, and then ultimately to our Board of Supervisors to make the decision. Next slide, please. I mentioned the special meeting of our planning commission. It's November 30th at the Palo Alto, Palo Alto Arts Center, and we're inviting anybody to come and provide verbal comments, ask questions about the project, and, and provide written comments at that time. We have another meeting, also a public input meeting scheduled for the Menlo Park City Council chambers on November 15th, so that's another opportunity for the public to provide comments. Next slide. You can get the draft EIR from our website, and we have paper copies. You can get the draft EIR from our website, and we have paper copies distributed at these libraries. Next slide. These are some background documents that will help people review the draft EIR in context. And I wanted to point out two documents, or two types of documents here. Since the 2000 general use permit was issued, every year, a compliance report is prepared and submitted to our planning commission for review. And it evaluates whether or not the construction that occurred in the previous year was fully compliant with the policies, the environmental mitigations, and the conditions of approval that were imposed on the projects. Those are all available on our website. Also, the 16 traffic compliance reports, that detail and document the cordon counts as all the raw data, plus the analysis and the final conclusions of whether or not the cordon counts were greater than, equal to, or less than the 2001 baseline. And all those documents are available on our website. Next slide. So this is the summary slide. This is where comments are directed, and right now, the published deadline for the comments. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. It might be more comfortable for you to join Dr. Galton at the table over there.
Sure.
So you can sit. Thank you very much for that. We'll take public comment if we have cards. I think we have.
We have one, dude.
We have one card.
Well, I thought we had three.
You thought we had three?
Oh, where'd they go?
I have three more.
All right. That's great. Thank you, public, for coming to join us. If you will come, I'll call your names. If you come and stand near the lectern, you'll have three minutes. I'll start the timer when you say your name. The light will turn amber when you have one minute left. So let's do it in this order. Jean McCown, Penny Ellison, Audrey Gold, Arthur Keller.
Good evening. Jean McCown, Government Relations for Stanford University. I may take a little bit more than three minutes, but I hope not. So what is in the application that's particularly relevant to the school district are proposed 3,150 housing units. And I just want to break that down. 1,700 of those are proposed for undergraduate students in dormitory settings. 900 of them are for graduate students, and 550 are proposed for faculty, staff. We got a scoping letter from the school district back in March, I think, that suggested a very high number for student yield that might come from those housing units, which we didn't really understand. So we then had a meeting in June with your staff and with Mr. Collins to talk through what was the, what were we looking at as far as the potential for student yield? And I think we had a very good meeting in June. We followed up with that in September with some materials, which I think was shared with all of you, you know, in terms of our look at that. Our data, your data, for the type of yield that comes from Stanford units is lower than what this draft EIR uses. It uses a higher per household yield rate than our actual data shows. So we think it's conservative, appropriate, because it is conservative. I want to clarify a question that's been asked. The 550 units, which could be family housing and would therefore be of interest to you, are required under the application to be multifamily housing. So they are, at a minimum, 15 units to the acre. It's not single-family housing, it's multifamily housing. That's what's in the proposal. So our understanding from your data, your professional forecasters, and I think it's what's in the DEIR when you take a look at it, is that if you look at the .5 student yield rate applied to those 550 units, we're talking about potentially 275 students coming from this housing. And the question is, as is addressed in the DEIR, whether there's capacity to accommodate that. And they've got answers to that in the materials that you will clearly need to look at and respond to in your comments. We're very committed to the relationship between the university and the school district. Over the years, literally every year, you've had some different demographers do this work each year, but we get regularly asked each year, what specifically is coming forward in terms of units being built? When are they going to be occupied? What are their sizes? What's the potential yield for students in your forecasting? And we expect to continue to do that on an ongoing basis with the school district. Finally, there's, you may not be interested as much in the no new net commute trips topic. You may or may not. If you are, I am happy to answer questions about the questions we've been asked in the community more broadly about the feasibility of continuing to achieve that concept, because we've given it a great deal of thought. We didn't idly suggest we could continue to do it without an enormous amount of analysis on our part. The DEIR appropriately, again, conservatively assumes we may not make that, but we have really good analysis and studies that suggest how we could do it. So if you want more on that topic, I'm happy to provide that to you.
Thank you. And we may. So stay tuned and don't go too far.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I have never seen our presiding officer allow someone to go so far. I think that's a great, great token of respect to our relationship with Stanford, so.
Penny Ellison, Audrey Gold, Arthur Keller.
Thank you. I'm Penny Ellison. My comments are going to focus in a general way on some school commute-related matters. I'm going to submit more specific comments in writing later this month. Stanford's, in my opinion, Stanford's no new net commute trips model is flawed. No net new trip commute trips is defined as no increase in auto trips during the peak commute times in the peak commute direction as counted at defined cordon locations around the central campus. The peak commute period is defined narrowly as the one-hour period of time with the highest volume of traffic as determined by the traffic counts. This narrow definition of the peak is the crux of a problem, because peak traffic periods are spreading out a lot. On some of our school routes, peak times now begin to build before 8:30 a.m. I experienced that this morning at 7:50, when our students are commuting to school. The traffic rush can last up to 10 o'clock a.m. or later, depending on the street. Further, severe congestion restrains flow on approach streets and limits the number of cars that can reach the cordon gates during that narrow count time. In our Safe Roots to School partnership, we deal with peak time traffic safety impacts by collaborating with the school district to make sure that traffic impacts are considered in setting bell times. We stagger bell times of schools that are located in close proximity to each other. We plan to have students arrive at school before the inbound regional traffic rush hits. This has gotten harder with peak spreading. We need a more accurate measurement of the auto increases incurred by Stanford development that affect alternative commuters of all ages, including PAUSD students. A new measurement methodology should take into account morning and evening peak spreading. It should also look at impacts on afternoon school commutes times. This change would be consistent with Stanford's stated goal of encouraging mode shift to reduce congestion, improve safety, and reduce emissions impacts. Because of peak spreading, the current cordon count methodology no longer supports these goals. Please consider a methodology that measures real auto traffic increases more accurately, considers impacts on school commutes, and takes peak spreading into account. Finally, if SB 328, the legislation that would push secondary school start times later passes this year, the cordon count probably will no longer cover morning school commute times for at least five PAUSD schools. And I have more comments, which I'll submit in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Audrey Gold.
I just want to thank Stanford.
Hold the mic up just a little bit.
There you go. I would just like to thank Stanford very much for providing additional after-school childcare facilities at Escondido. And I would like to point out that Nixon Elementary School has a very long waitlist of Stanford families that are looking for after-school care. As of this spring, it was about 75 families on that, or 75 students on that waitlist. And I would like Stanford to, if they could consider providing another facility at Nixon where they have the space, another portable building at Nixon, so that the families, the Stanford families there could have after-school childcare. I think that would help reduce traffic and impacts similar to what they did at Escondido. So I'd like to make that request. And I am also concerned by this bill that's in our legislature now that would change the bell times for our schools, for middle and high schools. They would have to start at 8:30 or later, and I think that will definitely impact families, because we will be competing with commute traffic at those peak hours. And so I think that could put our students at risk. We'd have more kids on walking and biking at the same time that the commute traffic is at its peak. So I think that is something that should be taken into consideration in this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gold.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Rader whether this is considered a public meeting in which our oral comments are considered for the FEIR.
We did not consider this to be a public meeting where we'd be recording the comments. But if you would like it to be, then I can improvise and record your comment and make sure it gets into the record.
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Thank you. So firstly, one of the things that was mentioned was 2.275 million square feet of academic and support space. That compares with 1.3 million square feet of the hospital, which is not considered part of this. The hospital's part of the city of Palo Alto. And 1.7 addition million square feet that's being considered for Palo Alto between now and 2030 or beyond. That's a lot of square feet. So I'm not sure that this plan adequately considers the cumulative impacts with the Palo Alto Comprehensive Plan 2030. I believe that Stanford should also consider not only in commute trips, but also out commute trips. Apparently, the out commute trips, for example, Stanford residents, people who live on campus who work off-campus, like spouses, students who have to commute off-campus in order to go to Gunn High School, or Terman, or other schools that are, for which the students go, are not considered part of the trips, and yet they do add to the traffic, but they're somehow not counted. So I think that Stanford should provide a free PAUSD school shuttle, paid for by Stanford, for Gunn, Terman, and other students who live on the Stanford campus, so that we can offset those trips. The school enrollment is on top of the Palo Alto Com Plan 2030 EIR, which indicates in that EIR that the Palo Alto and, that the middle school and elementary schools were overcapacity, and the high schools were not necessarily overcapacity, depending on how much capacity you considered for them. If you consider 2,300 students per school as the nominal amount, then maybe, but if, but we know that we can't have 100% capacity. We should have full payment of the ballpark to Hannover Bike Path improvements, not capped at $250,000. There should be an accounting for the no new net commute trips limitation without offsets. So the idea is, we should not count offsets that are not near the project. I'd like to see an accounting of that for what the cordon counts were in 2001 and what they are currently, and how the adjustments were made in order to account those. So we should explain any adjustments and where they were. I agree with Penny Ellison about peak traffic spreading. And also, what I understand from reading the DEIR is that the expectation for the no new net trips limitation, no new net trip commute limitation, that that's going to be met through the, through Caltrain use, that 100% of the expected increase in transit use in order to make the no new net trips limitation still hold is through Caltrain use. And I'm not sure how realistic that is in terms...
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Yes, I'm...
Finish your sentence.
Thank you. I'm not, yeah, I realize that the Stanford president have had extra time, but anyway. I realize that, I don't know how realistic it is that the, that all the new people, all new commutes will be offset through Caltrain, whether people will be living on the Caltrain corridor, whether all the workers...
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
...will be on the Caltrain corridor. I don't believe that's realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are the cards we had. I just want to make a comment about interim superintendent, Ms. Hendricks, stepping out. We had expected that she was going to take a call related to a family issue, so it has no, has no impact on our conversation at the moment, and has no indication to her feelings about this topic. But we had expected that she was going to have to take that call, so I'm sure she'll be back in a moment. So, colleagues, I think what we want to do now is go around and ask our questions, make our comments.
Yeah. I think one of the things that we were just hoping you would summarize, Dr. Galton, is we had some conversations with you and Kathy Mack and Steve Breanza. Were you going to summarize?
Yes, I'll be glad to do that. First, as it relates to the student generation rates, we have different data. I think that one of the, I guess, misconceptions is that we've retained a demographer to do our forecasting. We have an enrollment forecaster, but this individual's not a demographer. This individual does essentially the traditional cohort survival, cohort survival projections. As far as the, there are weaknesses in that. First, the notion of a 10-year projection. Actually, Kathy, I did before her, we did five-year budget projections. We could actually do 100-year budget projection. And we could actually do 100-year enrollment projection. It's very easy. It's spreadsheet magic. The chances of that projection catching any, there're bound to be turns within the next 100 years, 50 years, 25 years, 10 years, five years, and the chance of us catching it is negligible, because what we're doing is we're projecting based on children that haven't been born yet, children that haven't been born yet, and an economy that hasn't moved forward. So we're going to, with this next round of projecting, we are planning to be very careful on, I guess, calling out these assumptions and limiting the, I guess, the ability to just generalize based on them. In both Libby's, I was interested, because in Libby's projection that, or her responses that actually were mainly traffic responses, again, we find that the proper projection is, the proper rate is something like .70 to .82 students. And we have data to back this up. The Stanford projections are based on old projections and minimal data points. A second issue, so that's one issue, the issue of yield. A second issue is really the issue of school, the massive effect of Stanford development on school district finances. We have a, Stanford is, has the, well, the highest dollar, by far, the highest amount, dollar amount of exemptions in Santa Clara County. If you examine a recent project, the Mayfield Project, the Mayfield Project has an assessed value of $43 million. However, there's $40 million in exemptions. That leaves a net assessed value of $3 million, and Palo Alto's share of tax revenue is $13,787. This $13,787 has to be spread among the, there are 70 units in Mayfield Place. This $13,787 has to be spread among the, there are 70 units in Mayfield Place, and so this needs to be spread among, I guess, an estimate would be 50 to 60 students and $13,000. The average cost of educating a student in Palo Alto Unified School District is $18,000. Now, the, that $18,000, and we're developing another number because one needs to consider the, I guess, the marginal cost. In other words, if you add an additional student, there are both fixed costs and variable costs, and so the marginal cost isn't $18,000. But if we take that $13,000 and we spread it among 50 students, we come to perhaps a couple of hundred dollars a student. And so the, we don't know the characteristics of these 550 units that are being developed, but depending on whether they're rentals, or depending on whether they're, whether there's ownership, there's, their promise is to be a massive, it's interesting when we talk about shortfall. It's not really a shortfall. It simply means that the citizens of Palo Alto, the city of Palo Alto, need to absorb that delta. They need to absorb the amount of money that's needed to educate those, well, those, those children that come from Stanford University. And so this is something that, that topic that, that, the, I guess, that two-member group, which was Jennifer and Melissa, we had talked about, and we're in the process of developing. And then, of course, the third issue is the issue of, of traffic.
Ms. Peyton Castle, is that what you were expecting?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we shared, that Dr. Golden shared this discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Okay, colleagues, why don't we do questions and issues? Should we do a five-minute round? Six-minute round? Let's do a five-minute round. Shall we start with you, Mr. Collins?
You know-
Since you're at the, at the end of the row there.
May I ask forbearance to maybe go after someone because they, I want to go through these slides, and apparently there needs to be a quick change to the slide before we go through it?
Oh, okay.
So we could either-
Do you just want a, a three-minute break to do that?
Or we can continue, and I can just work with Vicki to-
Slides are available.
Okay.
Whatever you prefer.
They're available now.
Oh, Vicki had an issue with the PDF versus the slides.
I don't think so.
Are we okay with that, Vicki?
We're good, right?
You think we're good?
Yeah.
But if you need to make a change, I'll handle it.
You don't, do you mean a content change?
It's the header on the thing.
It's there.
It looks like it's changed and fixed.
Is this the PDF now?
Yes, but you can just scroll, we can just scroll through.
That means my wonderful transition graphics aren't in, but that's okay.
Oh, I see. Oh, sorry.
That is a disappointment. I understand.
Well, that's a minute, that's a minute we'll never get. So I'll just talk quickly. I will, the transition graphics, we'll have to wait for a special viewing.
You know what? I would be comfortable with doing more than three minutes here so he can completely go through his slides.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll try to go quickly.
Because otherwise, it's going to be very disconcerting.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
And if you feel like cutting me off and I'm going too long, you can tell me.
All right.
So I have three points that I want to go through. One is the analysis on the GUP EIR. Then, you know, while I was doing that, what really, it really, I had an epiphany about, oh, sorry, thank you. I was doing this.
I want to go through the GUP EIR analysis, and then while I was doing it, I really had an epiphany about, while we're spending a lot of time on analysis and process, there was a really important takeaway that I really wanted to emphasize about what we're trying to do, what our mission is. And then I also wanted to bring back a concern that I've, that I have about the cumulative impact, thank you, the cumulative impact of the Stanford project and other projects that are going on. So the first is the student, the famous student generation rate in the 10-year enrollment forecast, and then expected surges versus graduate growth, gradual growth. And Dr. Golden actually stole my thunder on the first couple of these, so I'll be quick. The .5 student generation rate, the famous multifamily .5, is based on the Decision Insight PAUSD Enrollment Forecast, and is also referenced in the City of Palo Alto Com Plan EIR, referencing the same source. And the source of that is page three of the Fall 2016 Decision Insight Residential Research Summary, which I hold in my hand. And you can see, this is the actual clip from the thing in it, and you can see the table there highlighted, multifamily units, total .50, exactly right. And it does say, "For more information regarding these calculations, please refer to Appendix B." And this is the entirety of Appendix B, this table. And you can see, looking at the table, that in fact, there are only, that most of the units, 1, 2, 3, 4 of the six things listed are actually single-family housing and townhouse developments, and so presumably not included in the multifamily calculation. And then two are, one is a multifamily, a multi-room apartment complex at 801 Alma, and the other is a set of studio apartments at the Treehouse Development over on Charleston Road. And the SGR for those two is .7 for Alma and .03 for the studio apartments at Treehouse. There is one child who we think lives in the manager's unit, which has, which is a one-bedroom apartment in that, in that otherwise studio complex. So I, I think the takeaway from this is that the .5, which was calculated presumably off these two points, is a thin, a thin point to balance the assessment of this whole process on. I would say both the city's process and the Stanford process. And we should just be careful. As Dr. Golden says, we have other data, we have more data. This was not the big focus of this group's process. They, you know, they pulled six data points of products that have been done since 2011. We have lots more projects from the previous decade that we can look at. So I'm not here to suggest a different number, I'm just, just to suggest, let's not do it, let's not hang our future on this little piece of analysis because this is too thin a slice to, to do our future, to base our future on. Let's, let's do a better job, and I think Dr. Golden is prepared to help us do that. Unless Stanford commits to building only multifamily units, it's unclear why we'd use the multifamily average. Ms. McCowen is, is the first that I'd heard that, thank you for mentioning, that there is a 15-unit zoning requirement. It's not clear to me that 15 units per acre precludes townhouses or not. Townhouses, in our experience, like Alta Real down at El Camino and Charleston Road, have very high student generation rates, actually closer to 1 than, than the multifamily. So if they are in fact, if that in fact allows townhouses, which I think it might at 15, I think we still have to be quite mindful that that could be a higher student generation rate than the, than .5. So, you know, again, I'm not here to say what the right one is, but I, I think we ought to think, we need to think clearly about this because a lot is riding on this forecast. And then secondly, the placement, displacement effect, I mean, Mr. Gerard raised it, other people have raised it. This is, this is tough. This is if we build, if they build on-campus housing that isn't for families, that generate more housing, more students in the housing that those people formerly were in. And I think the answer is definitely yes, but the problem is, no one can tell you how much. I certainly can't. So I think that's something to keep in mind. The 10-year forecast, I think Dr. Golden addressed this soundly, so I'll just skip over it. We don't, we PAUSD don't use this forecast for any purpose whatsoever, so I strongly recommend that no one else does either. And finally, the build-out over the 17 years, it said build-out will occur incrementally over the 17 years. That's not our experience with other developments. They tend to come online in bursts. It's something, Stanford West, a good example. We saw all the students from Stanford West come online within a three-year period. 628 units, and we saw it fully ramp in over three years. So, you know, I think that's just the nature of development. Families go there and they occupy. The other thing is disproportionate impact on grades. I think there's an assumption that things are spread evenly over the grades. That's, again, not what we see at most new developments. In fact, if you look at Stanford West, it's the last bullet point there in the first part, the 70% of the students at Stanford West are in the elementary grades versus 42% of the district as a whole. So I think as they build new developments at Stanford, we, we would do well to expect that there will be primarily elementary school students and plan accordingly. I can stop, but keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. This is the fun part, I did maps. So the, what's important, Stanford, what I realized is Stanford builds neighborhoods, and we build schools. And Stanford West, not just the development in Stanford West, but the entire west part of campus, is an emerging neighborhood, and in my view, we would do well to plan for a neighborhood school there. A little bit of history, oh, my, my graphics are there. Escondido, Escondido School was built in 1960. It was in direct response to the creation of Escondido Village, which was built in 1958. You can see the quote from the Stanford Daily, "Palo Alto has been considering a school on campus, and Stanford first decided to build Escondido Village in 1957." Nixon School, built in 1967, in direct response to the building out of Frenchman's Hill with 190 units of faculty housing that were completed in July 1968. So Stanford builds neighborhoods on their campus for their staff and faculty. We build schools for the kids who live there. It makes sense. What's going on at West Campus? In the 80s and the 90s, not, not very much. Pierce Mitchell, other Sand Hill Road, generated handfuls of kids. Then Stanford West, in the year 2001, changed everything. 628 units, lots of kids. This year, there were 247 kids generated from the Stanford West development. So now it's being proposed as another 550 units right down the road from Stanford West. And if you look at the total numbers, I mean, this is just math, even if you use the .5. You take the 210 existing elementary school students and add the 193 that you could expect from the 550, even at a .5 SGR, and you get 403 students. The average size of an elementary school in PAUSD this year is 419. So they're going to have an elementary school's worth of kids over there when this project gets built out. And, you know, as I said before, I, I think we'd all probably subscribe to this. If they build neighborhoods, we should build schools. But the trick is, we can only build a school, they control, they have all the land, so we can only build a school if they let us. And right now, those kids all go to Nixon School, it's a two-to-three-mile car rip, car ride away. Escondido's the same. And they all go all the way across town, four to five miles. So this goes to the car trips and traffic. We're generating a lot of traffic, and the more this gets built, we're, we're building houses where there are no schools. So that's going to mean traffic, period. So, you know, just to conclude, what's important here, I think, is creating a neighborhood school for an emerging neighborhood. And we don't have to. I mean, there are other ways we can educate these kids. It's not the end of the world. But kids are going to be there for 50 to 100 years. So unless we set aside the land to build a school, those kids will travel for 50 to 100 years. Well, hopefully not those kids, but they're successors.
I think we're a little more successful than that.
As I said that, it didn't seem quite right. But I, I think it's, we should be mindful that this is like a long-term decision we make, and if we don't set aside land for schools, there will be no school. If there is no school, those kids will have, there will be no neighborhood school for this neighborhood. The last thing that I just want to mention, and I've, I've beat this drum before, I think the cumulative impact of this alongside the city camp, com-plan is alarming in the context of our overall capacity. And by the way, Kirk, I did want to point out that there is a mistake in the EIR on the student, on the school capacity thing. Did you already get this?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Where it overstates the capacity that's been revised. If you, if you take a higher student generation rate, and I used .7 for both the city com-plan and for the Stanford work, you blow right through our, not only the capacity of our existing schools, but the capacity of our existing schools and new schools on our existing sites. And so there are two takeaways from that. One is, maybe you can, maybe we should be mindful and not do as much development, but the other is, if you're going to do development, set aside room for schools. We need land for schools, and development fees from the EIR does not generate five-acre parcels for schools, and that's what's been the standard for PAUSD. Now, there is talk about densifying schools. And I, I just want to clarify because, I mean, there's been lots of talk about this, and, and what does it really mean? Here are two examples from our local community. In Los Altos, last year, they proposed spending $39 million to buy 5150 El Camino Real to build 100,000-foot urban campus, parking underground, buildings that would be three or four stories high, and a site that would include blacktop and field space. That is a different school than any school that we or they have ever had. That's not to say it's wrong, or the education there would be bad, it's just, we should recognize that this is something different. And then Mountain View Wisman with their North of Bay Shore Plan, it's currently under consideration. This is the quote from the superintendent. "The old way of looking at developing schools campuses won't work anymore. Schools are going to have to go up. A two-story, more comeback, urban-style school with apartments over instructional spaces is what they are thinking would be appropriate." So these are quite, quite different models than what we've historically done, and we should be mindful, if we don't set aside room for schools, there won't be any school, well, these are the kind of schools that will be, that the only alternative will be to build schools like this. Or to increase the density at our existing schools, which, if anybody remembers that EMAC thing that we did, we kind of, I think, decided that we weren't very enthusiastic about. That's all I got. Thank you, I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues.
Sure. Thank you. Is there anything there, Dr. Golden, that you want to ask, a clarifying question about? I assume you're sort of taking notes and trying to get us to our joint comments. You don't have to, I'm just giving you the opportunity before we move on. Okay, great. Ms. Brienza?
Thank you. There's a lot there and a lot here, so let me see if I can be coherent. First of all, thank you for your presentation, thank you for yours, Mr. Collins. I would love to start by saying something that I am in complete agree with you, agreement with you on, that I came to a similar conclusion, was this idea of a neighborhood school. Simply because, based on the estimates, even the .5 estimate, and the students we already have there who have to go by car, or go all the way across campus, who don't have a neighborhood school already, who are there. And I, I know that there are many moving parts here, but it's something that I am very interested in us discussing and looking further into land to build a school so that those kids also have a neighborhood school. It's something we prioritized in our town, and most of our kids go to their neighborhood school, and the more housing you build in that corner of our district that does not have a school, the bigger impact it has, not only on the kids not having a neighborhood school, but in the commutes that have to happen. Both more cars on the road and students potentially having to cross major, major thoroughfares at the elementary level makes me very nervous. I know our Safe Roots to School folks have worked really hard to identify safe, safe routes. And the, the more we build housing where there is no school, the more small kids have to commute, and that increases the likelihood that they have to cross a major, a major road, or just go farther, and it, and it makes it less safe for our kids. So that is something I, I am really interested in us looking at, the possibilities there because there is limited land, as we know. So on to other comments that I have, many varied ones, but my comments here, although I am a community member and a, and a parent, and my, my lens right now is coming from the school district and what is best for the school district. So my, my thought on this is pretty clear, in that it is our job to educate the kids that come to us, and that is what we will do. That being said, there are a couple of concerns I have about that as more and more students come to us. One is the safety of our children, how they get to where they're going, how other people are on the road when they are getting to where they are going, how far they have to go to get to their school, and then the cost to us. And that is something that Dr. Golden summarized pretty well, I think. One of the things we've talked a lot about is, if we are getting, let's just say for argument's sake, 275 new students, but we are not getting the dollars that go along with them, that negatively impacts everyone in our community. It impacts all the other students and our district as a whole. So, so what do we do about that? And how do we continue to provide the high-quality education we provide, and provide it also for these 275 or so students while there are no new dollars coming in, or limited new dollars coming in? And, Dr. Golden, when you did those numbers for our $13,000 for our Mayfield Place students, I just assumed a .5 number for the 70 units, and it came out to $371 per student, and that's just a .5. So clearly, that's not what it costs us to educate them, so that is a tremendous, the other tremendous concern to me. So, so one of my requests, I suppose echoes Mr. Collins, let's make sure we get that number right, and I am not prepared to say what it is either. Maybe it's .5, but maybe it's higher than that. I know that in, in recent years, there have been multifamily units built, and I think really just looking at what that has yielded us in our district- really just looking at what that has yielded us in our district, actual numbers, how many students we're seeing from those buildings in, in the past few years would be really helpful. Are we timing, or am I just going? All right, I'm just going. So that's one thing I'd like to see. And again, the, this idea of no, no new net trips, I have concerns about this as a goal, while admirable. I am not sure how realistic it is. And as Ms. Ellison said when she was speaking, how you collect that data is obviously very important, and will impact what we see as, as the impact of, of your growth. So our kids right now, thousands of them are going by bike and by foot to school every day, and with each new additional car, it makes it less safe for them. And if the, we really are adding cars, but we're only measuring at peak hours, even though there's really an increase at lots of other times, I really want us to have an accurate number of that, and know the, the real impact. It's already nerve-wracking for parents to send their kids on a bike with the amount of traffic we have, but we have all worked really hard, the city and the district, to make sure we have the safest routes possible, and we're sending kids at the best times possible. And if we're going to be increasing the traffic at those times that we're considering off-peak, I think we really need to know that. I am curious, the 550 units for faculty, staff, I think is what we, what that estimate is. There's also the 900, 900 units for grad students, and I don't know if that has already determined what sort of graduate housing that is, right? So it could be graduate family housing, or it could be graduate, single-person housing. And I'm wondering if that's something that's already determined, if you can...
Can I answer that?
Can she answer that? Thank you.
Why don't you come to the table?
The table's fine.
That mic will be better for you.
The 900 units are intended for either singles or couples, not families. And the reason for that is, we have currently, in the housing stock on campus, a sufficient number of units for family housing. In fact, the housing demanded by families, or needed by families, has been going down. So the population that we're not serving now, that we would like to serve, both with the project we're building today, and then these 900 are the, the single and, and non-family couples. That's the unserved part of the graduate student population.
Well, that's good news. When I was a, a couple with children, we were displaced to off-campus housing that you all subsidized.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Right.
But it was, it was difficult to not be able to be on campus, so I'm glad that you have met that need. Okay, that, so we're really probably looking at the 550 units. I think, can we possibly, can I leave, open the option of coming back to me as I look through my pages of notes?
You may.
Although we're running out of time.
But it's a fifteen.
Right. Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Trust me, if you have something else that comes up, we'll let you do that. Ms. Peyton Caswell.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in and giving this presentation tonight. It's helpful. I was lucky enough to hear you give a very similar presentation, but I have to say, the second time around, it makes you think about different things. And this was slightly different focus, slightly. You know, I want to thank Stanford for being a partner with us in so many things that we've done, most recently with the childcare over at Escondido. And I think it goes both ways. It's a benefit for Stanford faculty and students to be able to send their children to Palo Alto schools. And I hear that all the time, looking at some Stanford people in the audience. And it benefits our community of Stanford right next to us. There are a lot of things that we get from that as well. So I just hope that this is a process where we'll continue to work together. I asked Dr. Golden to work on, with Ms. Mack when she returns, to work on making sure that we have projections that make sense, that are based on multifamily units that are similar to what you're putting in place, and that we make our forecasts based on that. We've been looking at the Mayfield Project, which of course is not necessarily Stanford families, right? It's a mix of low-income housing and...
Can I clarify that? Because there's a little bit of misunderstanding on that. Mayfield Place...
Right.
Which is the units on El Camino, is 100% affordable housing.
Okay.
And the reason it's exempt is because it's 100% affordable housing. It's nothing to do with Stanford.
No Stanford.
University Terrace up the street in California Avenue, which is single-family housing and condominiums, that is Stanford units. And those are largely going to be sold, ground leased, to faculty members, and those will be property tax paying. So, so the Mayfield Place project, Bob is right, isn't a, won't be paying taxes, but that's because of its status as an affordable housing project.
Okay, and so...
It's not, it's not, we're, university, there's, there's a small number of university employees in there. Largely, it's not university, you know, individuals that live there.
Sure.
Is that okay?
I, I think one of the reasons we were thinking of it, just running the numbers of that one, was because that one is tax-exempt. And I believe that, so here's my question, if you build more housing over, like Quarry Road Housing, as part of Stanford University, isn't that also tax-exempt?
But it's, it's on a different, you're 100% right. If we build housing and rent it to Stanford University employees, faculty or staff, then that's considered a university academic purpose, and it is tax-exempt. So that's 100% correct. If we don't, again, University Terrace on California Avenue, we're going to be selling those...
Right.
To faculty members. They are considered the taxpayer, they will be paying taxes. If we don't sell it to our own employees, and we rent it to them, then we, university can take its tax exemption for that property. Mayfield Place is yet another category, which is, it's not that Stanford is renting it to its own people, in fact, we're not. It's because it's an affordable housing project. So there's, there's sort of two different...
Right.
Bundles of where the tax exemption comes from. One is the university's academic purpose, one is an affordable housing purpose, and then the third category is, if we're selling it to our faculty, it's not exempt.
So Mayfield and Quarry would have a similar impact for us?
Assuming that, that none of those are for sale, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Jean. My point being there is, I want to make sure we're looking at yield from similar kind of housing, and we're not getting, you know, I think Mr. Collins brought up the Treehouse project, and that's not comparable to what you're going to be building.
I think if you look at the data we provided in our information back in September, we have all the Stanford West information in there, and that's probably the most comparable student yield, and some of those are larger units. We think the 550 will be one and two-bedroom units, but we've given you some different projections of what those might be. And so we, I agree with you. I think, you know, the most recently occupied multifamily-type units are Stanford West. That's probably the best comparable example.
Okay, so I would like us to make sure that we're taking a look at that multifamily housing, comparable projects. For those that aren't aware, we're one of about 100 districts in the state of California that get the predominance of our funding from property taxes. So if we add a student to our school district, the state doesn't send any money to us. We're expected to use our property taxes to absorb that. And, you know, in a good economy, that's a fabulous thing. Of course, we're, we've been in a good economy for a while, so that's likely to go down. It goes up and down. And this is why we had talked to Dr. Golden about what is the difference, and we need to have the marginal cost, as he mentioned, between what we would expect to get in taxes from Stanford, and what the cost is in order to educate our kids. Because one of the things that would be a disappointment to the folks from Stanford that send their children to Palo Alto schools, and also to this, students that already are in Palo Alto schools, is if we had to reduce program or increase, increase class size in order to provide a, an education for all the students that come to us. So that's, that's something I would like us to look at. Ms. Ellison brought up the question, or it might have been somebody else, brought up the question about why we don't count car trips going out of Stanford as part of the traffic. And, you know, anyone who's driven in Palo Alto recently knows how much congestion and traffic we have at almost every hour of the day. So I, it really feels to me like we have to be counting that as part of what the traffic actually is. And maybe that's called something else, but it's still part of the traffic pattern. And what was the time period for the peak? What's the actual hours that's measured right now? Is it 7:30 to 8:30? What is the time?
There's a two-hour period in the morning, and a two-hour period in the evening. And then, once the traffic counts are considered over the two hours, the, the peak within those two hours are evaluated. And I'm going to have to double-check to see exactly what the two-hour interval is.
I think it would be helpful for us to know that two-hour time period, particularly for the morning.
Yeah. I can, I can get that.
Seven to nine?
Seven.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, if, okay. Kirk, I think you mentioned at the last presentation that I went to, since we have Jean here, it would be good to confirm this, that if there's a need for more housing, that the GUP would allow more housing? Did you say something like that?
Yes, in that the current policy framework is generally, more housing is better. The, the floor is set, that Stanford must provide a certain minimum amount of housing in relation to the amount of development they do. But, but the ceiling has not been defined, because the more housing, the better the jobs-housing balance. And to that end, the Escondido graduate, the Escondido Village Graduate Project required an increase in the amount of housing that was allowed in the 2,000 general use permit, and that increase was granted.
And how does that process work?
There's a specific mechanism in the, in the community plan that says that Stanford is allowed to come back and apply for more housing than what they originally applied for. And then there's a process, a transportation analysis, to determine if the housing could be considered within the umbrella of analysis that was done as part of the EIR.
It's not, it's not granted at the outset, as of right. Basically, it's a sep, it's a new proposal brought at a later time, if applicable. And that's what happened with the Escondido graduate student housing. We, we, that was not in the original numbers under the current GUP. We needed to come in with a new proposal, which went through the Planning Commission, and traffic, as Kirk says, assessment of whether there's different transportation impacts that need to be mitigated because of that additional housing. So it's a, it's, it's encouraged or enabled, but not granted in advance, that there would be additional housing.
So if you needed it, you would come back, and there'd be a process like this, where the community comments, it's more than transportation, or it's still only transportation that's considered?
No, the full impacts of the housing are evaluated. There's, and I'll say that that would depend upon the structure of this general use permit, how additional housing would be analyzed. The, the, there's a standard requirement of the 2,000 general use permit that any project that has potential to have transportation impacts beyond what was analyzed in the EIR requires a special, a specific transportation study. There were also specific allowances to say that more housing could be applied for through a specific process. But I think, going forward, we could set the parameters by which new housing proposals were evaluated. And I think where you're going is potentially for impacts of schools, and, and that could be absolutely analyzed as a part of a increased housing proposal.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Collins, I have a question for you, from your, your analysis.
My best to answer.
Well, I'm sure, since you put it together, you probably can answer this. I just, the, the chart you have with the capacity for us, does that include sites that we're not using right now, or it includes all sites we have?
So you're talking about this, the bar chart?
Yeah, the bar chart.
So there are two line, there, you can see there are three red lines on that bar chart.
Okay, just a...
It's back a coup, yeah, perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Boy, they're so quick. So the, the topmost line includes the three additional sites that we have, Carverly Garland and Greendale slash 525.
Okay.
Converting them to school sites.
But not Pine Wood, because...
But not Pine Wood, no, not, no, there are no kids there. So those three, includes those three sites at two elementary schools and a 1,000 child secondary school. I'm happy to provide the full backup for that. So that's on the, and that's just added to the number that Dr. Golden provided as the capacity of the existing sites. So that's the highest red line there, yeah.
In terms of my thoughts on busing 300, 400 kids across Stanford, and basically not having a neighborhood school to serve the West Campus, you know, I think this is a value for Stanford as well. I mean, one of the things that you provide to your employees and students is the benefits of having good schools in your neighborhood. So, I mean, it's the same thing that we provide here. I mean, we provide it, but we're your service organization. And I think it's something we should talk about. I don't know how families feel there. I don't know if you've surveyed families in Stanford West about the fact that they have to get on a bus to go to their neighborhood school. Is that something that's been discussed?
I don't think, I don't know that we have done that, and I'm not sure what percentage of, of the children are, are using that, but I, I don't know that we know the answer to that, whether we're getting feedback about that. I, I hear the point you're all making. I mean, I, we're, I'm hearing you, that's all I can say about it.
Yeah.
I think the bus is in capacity, and parents pay for the bus.
They do pay for it, but I'm, is it, is it, you know, it's a capacity?
Yeah, there's a way this way.
So, I think we might need an extension. Not much of an extension. Would somebody like to make a motion to extend our meeting a little bit?
You'd like to have time to talk?
It's not weird at night.
No, 8:30. We're till 8:30.
I move we extend our meeting to 8:45? Is that...
Is that going to do it?
Is that going to do it?
Yeah, that would.
Okay.
Okay. Somebody second that? Moved by Ms. DeBrienza, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Collins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay? Okay, great, thank you. We'll go to 8:45. That's our one and only extension. I have comments as well, obviously. Ms. Hendricks, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't want to turn my time over. I was taking...
Okay, great. I saw you taking notes, so I thought maybe you had some stuff you wanted to. Well, my colleagues have done a great job of, of highlighting the same things that I was thinking about. I really thought I was misunderstanding what I was reading about, sort of tucking the kids into all the existing schools. I can say, as a board, we not only talk the talk, but we walk the walk. When the University Terrace Housing Complex was coming online, it was slated to go to Barron Park Elementary School, which, for us, in a load-balancing perspective, was a great solution, because it is a low enrollment school, and we could stand to have more kids there. But we, as a team, put our foot down and said, those kids are not crossing Page Mill to go to that school. They're walking up over Kite Hill with their friends on the path to walk to Nixon, to their neighborhood school. And we will figure out how to pay for more portables and make it work, because we don't want those kids going someplace else, where the rest of the kids in their neighborhood are not going. So when I was reading this, I was thinking, surely the folks who wrote this understand that we did that, because that's what we do, because we want to make sure the kids have that experience. So I will piggyback on my, my colleagues' comments and say yes. I don't know how we do it, or how we figure it out, but putting space on campus for the kids in their neighborhood school would be fabulous. I know the university does it for childcare services, right? We built something at the corner of Sarah and El Camino years ago for childcare on campus. It's part of the beauty of living on a campus and going, and going to work on a campus. You can, you know, ride your bike from your home and drop your kids off at the childcare place, or drop your kids off at school. I, I worked on the campus in the early 2000s, and I rode my bike to Escondido and dropped my kids off, and rode my bike to my office at the Graduate School of Business, and it was a real attractive part of the work situation there. So I'm all for that. I had a, a specific question about the other parts of expansion over this time period... I had a specific question about the other parts of expansion over this time period. Is there expansion also being considered in the off-site locations, like in Redwood City, or over on Porter Drive, or other places? Or is it just the GUP, the expansion that's being comprehended now is just on the contiguous campus?
It's just the academic campus in Santa Clara County. Redwood City has an approved specific area plan, I'm not...
Their version of GUP.
Yeah, and the idea up there is clearly some facilities to move administrative support units off of campus up there, long, you know, sort of relatively long-range build-out of that site. There's no plans, right, for the additional, you know, buildings in the research parks. In fact, some Stanford units that are in the research park today will be moving up there. So, no, this is totally about the academic campus, the unincorporated Santa Clara County lands.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. It wasn't completely clear to me if this was in conjunction with something else. Same concerns as my colleagues on the revenue following the students, or not. It sounds like mostly it's or not. And how we don't compromise the other kinds of programs, class size, the other things that make our district special. And lastly, with respect to the traffic, yes, if we had neighborhood schools, we would have less traffic, but just in general, the development itself around traffic will be an issue. It's probably a bigger issue when you go out and talk. I mean, it's a big issue for us, because we have so many kids who ride their bikes to school, but I'm sure it'll be a bigger issue when you go and talk to other constituents about this. So that's actually it for me. Let's go around again and see if there's any other questions or comments. Yes?
I had an answer that I said I would search for, and it is the time of day that the traffic counts are done. At, you're right, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. in the morning...
4:06.
And 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the evening. And in 2016, the peak hour was deemed to be 8:00 to 9:00, and 5:00 to 6:00.
Nice workday. Mr. Collins, anything else?
Just briefly, I do want to thank Mr. Gerard and Ms. McAllen and everybody else who, I mean, I think this was a constructive and useful discussion on, you know, a topic that's going to impact our community for the foreseeable future, as long as any of us are around and a lot longer after that. So I really, I echo my colleagues' comments that, you know, we have to really think for the long term, and when it comes to neighborhood schools, that has been our value, that is part of our value, that we try to deliver to our kids, and that Stanford has traditionally delivered to the kids that live on their campus. So I hope that, I hope that we find a way. I think it's really important, frankly, that we find a way to continue to do that. I would hate to be the school board that failed to drive that home. The one other thing I didn't focus, I guess I have school capacity on the brain, because I didn't focus so much on the operating costs aspect, and I'm so glad that my colleagues did. I mean, just to throw a couple of ballpark numbers out, even if you said this generated 500 kids, and, you know, just to clarify, there are 900 graduate student houses in the GUP, but there are 2,000 graduate student houses in the current GUP that have not yet been built, that are being built. So between where we are today and when this GUP concludes, 2,900 graduate student houses will be added on campus. If you believe in any displacement effect at all, and I do, I mean, that's going to generate a bunch of kids. So if you said 500 kids, 275 plus displacement effect, 500 kids, $12,000 per kid, 2/3 of $18,000, which I think is lower than our actual incremental cost, that's $6 million. And, Ms. McAllen, I think I have it right, if this property, if the on-campus property is rented as opposed to ground leased, then it does not generate any additional property tax revenue. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, if it's being used for a university academic purpose, then it's tax-exempt.
And if it's rented to a university staff on campus, then...
That's considered an academic purpose.
Yeah. So to the extent that it's rental, we get nothing. And $6 million, or if it's more like 800 kids, which is more like what I think, times 12,000, that's almost $10 million. That's a lot of dollars. And that, you know, we have a $230 million, $10 million is, well, it's eight teachers per million, so it's 80 teachers. That's 80 teachers, folks. So that sounds like something that we have to be very concerned about, and I'm really glad my colleagues and Dr. Golden and Ms. Mack are going to be focusing on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Misty Branza, any other questions or comments?
Just thank you for coming and having this conversation with us. The relationship between the parties, I think, has really, has always been really valuable. Stanford University brings so much to our district, and I think that we are a great asset to Stanford. So I look forward to continuing this conversation to make sure we really serve our students, we keep them safe, and we keep the high-quality education that we've been able to offer as we welcome new students in from this growth, whatever it is. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Baten-Caswell, anything else?
No, I just want to echo that, Ms. McAllen. We've had a good relationship. I would like to continue to have a good relationship, so let's figure out how to work together to make this work for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hendricks, anything?
Yeah, I just want to echo my appreciation for the presentation. Thank you so much for being here and for the partnership we share. And also want to extend a thank you to Dr. Golden for his work on this and his leadership. So, Dr. Golden, thank you for what you're doing on behalf of the district, and we look forward to continuing the conversation with you.
So, Dr. Golden, just want to give us a quick next steps, and if you have any other comments or questions, we welcome those as well.
Well, the next step is, we have this agendized for the meeting on the 14th, and at that point, I'll be able to walk in a draft set of comments.
Okay, great.
Can I, just one last?
Yes.
I just want, for the audience members who are watching on TV, I just want to point out that Supervisor Sumitian was kind enough to join us for the entire meeting, and has been very helpful in coordinating our questions and answers, and coming up to speed on this whole process. So thank you to Supervisor Sumitian for all the many things that you do for us.
Yes, please submit comments in writing. Kirk, what was that address again? Oh, darn it, sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, 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 absolutely, I'll be happy to repeat it. Yeah, there it is. I was going to put it up.
Anyway...
If you can remember David Rader, the suffix is the common county suffix, so...
D-A-V-I-D dot R-A-D-E-R.
That's it.
Thank you, Derek. All righty. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.